The Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to our, our meeting for the agenda for Cowan Township for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll begin with Commissioner Evans with his commentaries.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. The Board of Commissioners is here to represent everyone in Cowan, and we strive to be sure our decisions address the needs of all. We're in the, are all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. Well, Saturday's the big day, the Spackman Farm Preview Event, and we're all set for the big day. This Saturday, November nineteenth, at three thirty PM, to celebrate the new barn roof and driveway at historic Spackman Farm, to create awareness of what still needs to be done, and to peek into what the future could look like at Spackman Farm. There will be speakers, refreshments, and a whole lot of love in the air. It's open to the public, but RSVPs are requested, so we can have enough chairs, refreshments, and parking. Please RSVP to MEvans@cowantownship.org. The Historical Commission and Parks and Rec have done a bang-up job getting ready for this. Please join us if you can. Approaching the finish line. LURDA is almost a done deal. Of the various entities we needed approval from, the one we expected to go the most smoothly has had the most bumps along the way. But no fear, on Thursday, December fifteenth, Commissioner Young and I will present LURDA to the county commissioners, after which we should be ready to go. Which is a great segue right into Cowan Township is open for business. Getting LURDA passed is just the beginning of stepping into the light. We need to immediately start marketing the possibilities LURDA provides for small businesses if we ever plan to take Cowan to a new level. I know, I've got a list of small businesses to recruit to Cowan once LURDA's in place. We'd love to hear your suggestions, hopes, and wild dreams for new businesses along for Lincoln Highway. And nothing is ever perfect, but it's our township, our community, our home. We can all be part of the solution by eagerly spreading the good news about where we live. Hashtag, look out for Cowan. These troubling times, I'm happy to say that in recent weeks, there have been no new threats made against cash. I'm also happy to report that for the most part, our elections here in Cowan were carried out in a civil, respectful, neighborly way. There were only a couple of instances of incivility and disruption, mostly at the Cowan Three precinct. Some of the adults in the room chose to behave like adolescents, a troubling problem I've been addressing at almost every meeting. Time to start, stop feeding the incubator of hate. It's time to be kind to each other, to be positive powers of example for each other, and for our children. It's time to give peace and love a chance. Clean up time. It's a shame social media groups can always find a way to distort and twist something good into something nefarious. The Spackman Farm event is open to all, but we requested RSVPs to ensure we had enough refreshments, chairs, and enough parking. Somehow that got turned into, doesn't sound very inviting if you gotta say yes or no. You're not a part of the solution if you're just looking to find something wrong. We need people to be a part of the solution. As far as that farm goes, if you've been up there, there's not a whole lot of room. And no, you can't just park on the lawn. There are a couple of sinkholes and things, so, you know, come on, let's think positively. With that, I will shut my mouth.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. He always seems to break the ice for us as we go into our meetings, so it kinda helps to get an overview of what's going on, you know, where we're having positive feedback, negative feedback. He always seems to break the ice so that we can move forward with our agenda. And for the record, we did have a six o'clock conditional use hearing, the applicant for four-one-oh-two Associates for Offill at four-oh-six Esameles Road. Thank you. Moving forward, I think we'll hear now from the Township Engineer.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, Commissioners and Township members. My name is Carl Schmidt from Arrow, and this is a, a brief presentation on the three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is a request for consideration of the final payment app, pay app number three to Charles Higgins and Sons, in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars even. This is for the Lloyd Avenue Bridge traffic signaling upgrades. And again, this is the final payment for that project. It closes it out. So this is a request for a motion on that payment.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the balance. Oof, that was a lot. I mean, we started out at a hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and now to make a motion for the balance of thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars to be paid to Charles Higgins and Sons, Inc., for the completion of the Lloyd Avenue Bridge traffic signal.
So moved.
Second.
It was so moved by Commissioner Tendaro, and second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Josh, thank you. So moved.
I'd just like to comment on that. You know, again, kudos to everyone who was involved in this, in that project. I think Lorraine and Josh were the only board members who were around at that time. But Township Management and citizens who pushed for it, I can't tell you how many people came up to me on Election Day to say, my God, that Lloyd Avenue Bridge has changed our lives.
Good. Happy to hear that.
Very good. Second item is another pay request. This is a second pay request to Long's Asphalt, in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. This is for their two thousand and twenty-two road program, where there's been a miscellaneous list of asphalt paving in, in the township. This is pay app number two. Work is done. The final payment after the final punch list will remain at five percent, but for this second pay app, we have a request for your motion.
Yes, can we entertain a motion for a payment for, in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-two cents? To Long's Asphalt. It was moved by Commissioner Evans, and second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's moved, approved.
Thank you. Last item. This is a request for consideration to advertise the bid of the golf course pump house demolition. This is kind of after the horseshoe road was, or the building was demoed. This is similar in that same area. It's a dilapidated pump house. It's been cornered off from traffic, so it's been on the list to get to, and we are ready to bid. So we'll, we request a motion for bidding.
Yes, can we please entertain a motion for, to advertise the bid for the golf course pump house demolition?
So moved.
It's so moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Evans. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. If no other questions, that was it for our update.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Come out to Spackman Farm on Saturday.
Please. Thanks. We'll see you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Do we have any hands up in the audience, Mrs. Denny?
Not at this time.
Okay, so moving forward, we'll now have the Township Manager's report.
One second. The first thing on the agenda that I wanted to speak to the board is to give authorization for us to send a letter of support on behalf of the Municipal Authority for a PA Small Water Grant. You know, there's no obligation on our behalf, other than to just show that we are in support of this project. And as the governing entity, we wanted to make sure to send a letter of support.
So we just need to entertain a motion to have this letter of request in support of the Municipal Board for a grant, for a small water grant, and that is for the Grainer Lane and Cowan Meeting House Road. Entertain a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Evans, and second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
So the next item that we have on the agenda is the Griffith Farm Extension Contract Review. You know, this is something I, I don't necessarily, the board may not need to, to act on it this evening. I need to bring it to your attention, because I know we've, we've been talking about future plans, things to that effect. If the board wants, we have another budget meeting Monday evening, if you want the Finance Committee to review that again before, and we can bring it back to the board on November thirtieth.
It's my opinion that it's been working out great, having it.
It is definitely.
And I, I, I'm hopeful that any, well, future plans continue, a continuation of agriculture there.
Right.
So I, I, I would be in favor of getting that in. We, we haven't really begun to discuss future plans. We've talked about the eleven acres that would be a great spot to start things, and I'm sure that there would be a way that if we were to try to do a walking path around the perimeter, that we could do that. We could figure something out, so.
I am sure the, the farmer would definitely work with that on that. I think, you know, the big concern for him is that we give him enough.
Oh, yeah.
You know, notice so that he doesn't put seed somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
Waste materials. So, you know, it's completely up, if the board is comfortable, we can extend that for another year at this point, or if you wanna wait for another meeting, it's, it's totally up to the board.
I think we should move forward, especially if he's in agreement, and we're in agreement. We can move forward, and, you know, possibly for the end of this year, we will already have that solidified and secured. Do we need to entertain a motion for that?
Yes, you absolutely.
Okay, so, but so moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Evans, that we move forward with the Griffin Farm Extension Contract, and that would be for the year two thousand and twenty-three?
Correct.
Everybody in favor? Say aye.
For we both, there is a, a person in the audience with their hand. Cheryl?
Yeah, I just, I, I agree. I think it's a perfect, the plans for the future are not laid out yet, but I wondered, is it possible in the agreement that you have with him to put some language in that gives you access to whatever your plans are gonna be, so they're in there in case he says no? Do you know what I'm saying?
The, the contract is only for a year. It's on a year-to-year basis.
Is that all it is? It's one year?
They update it every December.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
And, and I, my understanding of the wording of it, Cheryl, it, 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 it's more of us saying that he has access rather than?
Then you have my round?
Yes.
Okay. All right, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, did we get that on record, Denise, for the motion for that? All right, thank you.
Yeah, we just need an act, a vote.
Okay. Everybody in favors?
Aye.
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 So moved.
So the last item that we have wouldn't be necessarily an expenditure until January of two thousand and twenty-three, but again, wanted to get this before the board. And this is to have a professional service agreement with Gilmore and Associates for, for recreational planning purposes. Gilmore is already the engineer for the Municipal Authority. You know, we have a very good relationship with, with that engineer, and he is very in tune with trail and trail initiatives. So I had Ms. Swan, Abby Swan, the other Swan.
Two Swans.
Get a quote from him, so that we have an idea of, of what the engineering would cost for the Beaver Creek Trail. You know, the, the situation that we are always struggling with, with these trails, is there are not grants out there to pay for the engineering. There's grants for the construction.
Right.
So we essentially have to pay for the engineering upfront, and, and go for DCNR grants to construct. This would be for segment five of, of this trail. And if you can meet two seconds, let me open this up. You know, I hate to say it, we all know trails are kind of my, my pet project. You know, it, it really would be a great amenity for the community. You know, if, again, the board can, can act on this this evening, or we can take this to the Finance Committee, but I, I just want the board to be aware that there is still movement here. There, there's tread on this, and, and really what the cost of this is. If you did wanna move on this tonight, you know, we can put it in. And Mr. Young, how would you feel about taking this either from the Open Space or the Sidewalk Fund?
What, what's our total? I'm sorry.
Lisa, would you know roughly what we have in Open Space Fund?
No, no. How much is the total again on the?
For the segment five not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
I, I would have to see what's left in Sidewalk.
We have.
But we could, we could determine that at a later date, can't we?
Oh, we can discuss it on, on?
On Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, we wouldn't be making any of these expenditures until two thousand and twenty-three. It's just, we want to give Gilmore the ability to plan for this as a part of their.
Right. Yeah, let's figure that out Monday night, but we'll, do we have to, okay, the expenditure or just insert it into the budget?
Just the PSA.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put the, the expenditure as a part of the two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's figure that out on Monday and put that into the budget.
Okay. So if the board is, is so inclined, they could make a, make the authorization that I could sign the PSA.
In honor of Mr. Cruz, who started this whole project, I would make a motion to approve the PSA.
Second.
So it's been agreed and moved that we approve the PSA for the Gilmore and Associates for the Beaver Creek Trail Segment Five project. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Hey, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. We have a question on the floor.
Tony DeSario, two fifty-one Loomis Avenue. What, what'd you say the total cost of the, the, of the trail's gonna be?
Well, this, this, what we spoke about this evening was just the engineering for segment five, and that's seventy thousand dollars.
For the whole trail?
Well, the whole trail, and I, off the top of my head, Mr. DeSerie, I, I need to look at this real quick. Give me a second. I don't wanna give you the wrong number.
Well, just give me a roundabout. I'm.
Well, but I, I, I don't. Because I know you'll hold me to it.
No.
Oh, yeah. One second here while I pull up the study.
Now, this is a trail we have no parking for, right?
Well, the parking would, would be, I mean, we do have parking there. We have parking at Lloyd Avenue. We also have parking at the Municipal Building. We have parking at our golf course. That's all of the trail.
But there's not at Meadow Lake or reserves or whatever, where it starts.
Where it starts is, is Lloyd Avenue.
Or where it ends.
Where it ends is down by our golf course. You could park at our golf course. The total project is a little over eight million dollars.
Eight million?
Yes.
Wow. And where's that money coming from?
Well, the engineering, as I mentioned, there's not grants for the engineering, but the construction, you can apply for DCNR grants, which will pay for fifty percent of the trail.
So then Township stuck with four million dollars?
Or we apply for grants to match with that.
You gonna put one up the farm also?
It is an amenity that if the, the Township residents feel that they want that, then that's what we will do.
How many want it? That's one.
I do.
I do.
That's two, three, four.
We all want it.
Eight million dollars, four million dollars for four people?
Well, you gotta remember, there'll be federal grants and state grants.
Let's ask you a question. How many townships are not taking this initiative?
I don't know. I don't, you know.
This, this is. This is gonna connect us with, in a lot of ways, that'll generate enough income to counter what it will cost.
What kind of income? Where's it coming from?
Do we have restaurants? Do we have more restaurants coming?
On the walkway, on a trail, you gonna have a restaurant?
Mr. DeSerie, Mr. DeSerie.
Go ahead.
People come to town, and then, before they leave town, they're anxious to spend money somewhere.
In Cowan?
In the old Cowan that you're thinking of? Probably not, but in the new Cowan we're moving towards, you better believe it. Believe me. And you'll have a nice place to walk, and as, as I think Paul and Josh always say, you'll be on that trail more than anyone.
There's gonna be a lot of federal money and state grants for this project. I mean, it.
Someone's gonna get this money.
I'm just asking where the four million dollars is coming from.
You'll be surprised.
Are taxes are gonna get raised?
No, your taxes are not gonna get raised.
And this is gonna connect Cowan, not just Cowan. I mean, this is across the whole county. It's an inter-county-wide project where we'll all be connected. And it's gonna go as far as from Exton and tie into possibly Great Valley and.
I don't think I could walk that far.
Well, that's when you stop at a restaurant and patronize someone and have ice cream.
I'm just asking where the four million's coming from.
You see, the.
We need to do engineering, and, and we're gonna figure that out, but.
I'm not talking about. Tony with, Tony.
You know, you have to have that engineered. I'm just asking.
Tony, with all due respect, I, I, I run the Broad Street, and I do it virtually now, and I run from Exton to the Target in Malvern and back.
It's good, Josh.
Yeah.
Well, also, you can pick up any study that will tell you, the number one thing that increases property value is access to trails.
He did.
Dollar for dollar, that increases your assessed value of your home is access to trails. This is a commitment, and this is.
I just asked where the four million was coming from.
And, and again, we are working on that. We're gonna be writing grants. We're gonna put, but the first phase is, until you have the engineering done, you can't apply the grants.
And Tony, I'll, I'll leave you with a good note, good note on this. That money, the grant money, is out there, and it's gonna be spent.
If we get the grant money, I'm happy.
Let me, let me, let me finish. Somebody's gonna get that money.
Yeah.
So it may as well be us. It's gonna be spent somewhere, so let's, let's go get it.
All right.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And just one other point.
Lot of question.
And, and this trail here, which is an extremely small trail that we have along Geo Carlson, and I'm in and out of this building all hours of the night.
You see people walking?
Yes.
I've been here for twenty-seven years, all my life.
I've seen you ride your bike on it. I've seen you on it with your granddaughter.
Yeah, I do. But how many people do you actually see? Maybe thirty, forty people a day?
I bet there's more than that.
I used to, I used to run it.
You do see a lot of people. When spring first comes, you, you see a lot of people. When fall, when it gets cool, in the fall, you see a lot of people. After that, you don't see anybody.
But it's still an amenity that, that is used by our residents.
And people like.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I, I hate to make this point. I'm in a newer neighborhood that has a trail system. People drive to my neighborhood, so they have somewhere to walk their dogs.
Yeah.
We have another resident that would like to speak. Please state your name, please, for the record.
Mark Young, twenty Beaver Run Road. I have the exact same concerns as Tony has. If we don't secure the four point one million, we don't lay one piece of grass, we disrupt one path, we don't do any construction, it's not gonna come out of the eight point one million that we're gonna supposedly get back from FEMA. You know, it's four point one million dollars. I think of a lot of money for however many people are walking on it. I think I agree with Tony. There's a Struble Trail. It's a five-minute ride from where we live, where you live. There's lots of trails around here. Yeah, it'd be great to have it, but at four million dollars, I don't wanna see a thing done until we have every dollar covered in grants. And I think the residents of this township have had enough of taxation that could come out of this. Okay, we just went through, don't tell me there's not gonna be any taxes, gotta be paid for. So easy to say, no more taxes, I won't raise taxes. Well, we did raise taxes by a far amount, and this is four million. Let me finish. I give my little bit of time here. Okay, so four million dollars is an awful lot of money compared to the number of citizens in this township. I don't know what the township amount of residences now, and what the division would be for cost per township residence, but I think it'd be pretty darn high for, for a trail. I like the Struble Trail. I go walking on a Struble Trail. I drive to it, it's easy, it's not a problem. But get the grants, get the engineering, all that fun stuff, but we don't start one shovel into the ground until we have the four point one million dollars to build this.
Yeah, Mark, I believe that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking anything about spending money, approving money. We're talking about doing, doing, approving the expenditure for the engineering. And I really didn't think you were gonna bring up the tax thing again, because this time a year ago, you were quoting and quoting all these reasons why we should get the money from FEMA upfront, and we didn't need to do this, and it was bad thinking. And, and we explained everything, and I explained everything. And Mr. Young, Commissioner Young's played everything. We pay taxes, Mark.
I pay them too.
I, I know you do, and that's what you're complaining about. We, Mr. DeYoung, I let you finish.
I will go back.
I let you finish.
Okay.
We pay taxes too. We don't want to raise taxes. The last, that tax increase last year, no way. But you know how much damage was done by the storm. Nobody is talking about raising taxes. How many years is it gonna take for this, this, if, if every, if all the stars aligned, Kristin, how many years would it take for the, the trail system to fall into place?
Probably ten years.
Yeah. So that's where we are right now.
Okay.
This is an.
I want to hear what we're saying, is if the construction doesn't start, do the engineering.
That's what we said.
Right.
That's what we're doing. That's what I just said.
But until we get to the point where we know that we have all the grants, that one dollar's coming out of our, I'm not talking about me. See, you're talking about in the wrong context when I complained about the taxes. I, I said from the very beginning, this is gonna have no effect on my life. Okay? It's one less dinner I go out to, or whatever. I'm worried about our people that struggle.
Yeah, so.
That's what I said the whole time for the whole tax problem. I got up and I talked, and I called in for my vacation in Florida to make sure that I got in.
I remember.
I called in on behalf of our residents that are struggling, not by myself. I dropped a hundred and sixty dollars unfortunately, too easy. I mean, I play the stock market. I'm a daily trader. You know, thousands of dollars all of a sudden disappear from my market. You know, thousands of dollars all of a sudden disappear from my market account. Okay, I do good, thousands of dollars come back. But what I'm talking about is, and I wish you would agree to it and recognize it.
We already did, Mark. We already said that.
No.
We said that we're talking about the seventy thousand dollars for the engineering.
Going to the minutes that says no shovels, do in the ground until we have the grants.
Are we even talking about how much money we need? Is that for discussion tonight in any way, shape or form?
It was brought up, Robert.
Someone asked a question, how much would it cost?
And that was, Mr. Desario.
We never discussed that.
Sure we got the eight point one million dollars.
And that was, was that a hard figure? Was that a complete calculation or was that a?
The conceptual plan, that's all it is.
Yeah.
We're exploring.
Okay, so say it's six to ten. So the six million dollars, the same picture applies. We're still two million dollars away. Or are we three to six? You see what I mean? This thing, cost of asphalt could go up double.
And I could die tomorrow.
What?
And I could die tomorrow. I mean, like, let's see what happens as things unfold, Mr. DeYoung.
It'd make no sense whatsoever.
Tell me about it. Thank you.
There's one hand raised in the audience. Ms. Spalding?
Well, this is one of those times that I'm on your side, Mark. I mean, look, you have to have trails. You must have them if you want Callan to come up in the value of your houses, in the use of people going someplace. And Mark, you may go to the Downingtown Trails and so do I because we don't have any that I could go to on our side. And what does that mean? Every time I go to those trails, because I take my dog walking a lot, I almost always go somewhere, eat, drink, do something. And where's that money going? It's all going to Downingtown, all of it.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, but you know, the trail system, we are behind the ball, we are behind the dimes in these trail things. And Mark's absolutely right. People are gonna grab that money. Now, you have a choice. You can ignore it or you can be, you can either be a part of it or you can ignore it and leave Callan the way it is. And I don't like taxes either, but quite frankly, I'd pay for that before I pay for some of the other crap that goes on. So no, Mark, I completely disagree with you. They're right. They're absolutely right. That's all, that's all I would say.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl. Gotta go to the.
State your name, please.
From one oh three Airwood Drive. I'm very passionate about wellness and, you know, not to pile on, but we have to not just think about ourselves today, but we have to think about the people who are gonna be moving into this township. And all the younger people that are coming in, all the development and what are the things that they're going to want? And to Cheryl's point, you know, we can't be wedged in the middle of Coatesville and Exton or Downingtown and be that township that says, no, we're not gonna have this. That's what's gonna keep us the way that we are. We absolutely must invest in this. There's something called quality of life and this is a huge component of quality of life. So when we think about that, we care about our people, we care about the amenities that we have here that are gonna lead to a good quality of life. So that's just my feeling. I would pay over and over again for it and I think we're behind and I can't wait to have trails, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so anyone else that would like to speak before we move forward?
Nobody else in Zoom, Mark?
So moving ahead, we have ordinances and resolutions.
We vote on that?
I don't believe so.
Did we, Denise? I thought we did. Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
Yes.
To approve, um, Josh, yes. I think we just gotta decide, you know, where the seventy thousand dollars, what fund it was gonna come out of. And you said it would take that into consideration in Monday's meeting.
Twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay. All right, so moving forward, we have some ordinance and resolutions to go over. The first one is a request to consider resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three.
That is still tabled, so you can skip that.
So we can let that one go.
Kristen, are we gonna get that finished by the end of the year?
We are waiting on parts.
Yeah.
They ordered them and that's what we're, we're waiting.
Okay.
Waiting for the materials to come in.
And that's for the township project, for the project, for the LED light transition project. You know, parts are still waiting to be, uh, come in for the project to begin. So we'll just table that to the next meeting until the parts arrive. The next resolution is a request to consider resolution twenty-two dash thirty-five, authorizing the township manager, secretary to sign all documents necessary with Gilmore and Associates, Inc., to conduct general engineering services for the Beaver Creek Trail.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Kennedy Evans, second by Commissioner Lomax. Tendaro, all in favor? Please say hi.
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 All in favor? So moved. It has been agreed upon to have the township manager and secretary sign all documents for the Beaver Creek Trail. We will now have our minutes to approve and be acknowledged from our October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
The move by Commissioner Evans and second by Commissioner Tendaro. That the minutes for the board of commissioners meeting from October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two be accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
We'll now have our financial report by Mrs. Swan.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, just a couple of notes for the board. Uh, we're getting towards the end of the year, so budget season is winding down. Uh, presentation will be at the November thirtieth meeting. Approval to advertise and then hopefully approved December twenty-second. With the finance department, uh, as another note, being proactive, we are starting to pull together our files for the twenty twenty-two audit. And we hope to have that completed, uh, April, May of twenty twenty-three. That will be for the general fund as well as liquid fuels. Uh, liquid fuel audit will be for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. That is all I have, um, other than your approval for the general check fund.
Thank you, Lisa.
Always precise. Can I make a motion to approve the general check runs for checks number four nine one two eight through four nine two two one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young and second by Commissioner Tendaro that all checks for the general run have been approved. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved that all checks have been approved.
Thank you.
Now, moving forward, we'll have our board and commission updates, starting with Parks and Recreation. It's a lot going on. But for the month of December, while we're closing in on Thanksgiving, so while I have the opportunity, just wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving with their families. Uh, we have so much to be grateful for. We're coming out of very trying times and very difficult times throughout the world and, you know, we have much to be thankful for. So take this time to reflect on family and friends and let's not forget about those who are less fortunate than ourselves. And, you know, be mindful if we have a neighbor that, for me, that are single or elderly, you know, let's show them some love. We're gonna get past, uh, after our big Spackman Farm celebration on Saturday, we hope everybody will come out. This is gonna be something to embrace. And it gives us an opportunity to look into the future. And that's what we're here for. We're working now for the future, you know, for what's to come as we develop. Callan is a place to call home. You know, as, like you said, as we look around and we see all the activity and development, they're good signs. But as people are coming, we need to be able to provide them with the kind of stability that they stay. Not that they just come, but they wanna be proud of where they live. You know, with things like the trails and new restaurants and new businesses that are, find their way here. They will find their way here. There's no doubt about it. You know, when they look and they see the things that we're doing to improve the quality of life, as Mrs. Evans has said earlier, that's where people wanna live. That's where they wanna be. So let's be that place and time where people wanna come and raise their families and, and bring employment and, and new businesses. That's what we need to look forward to. So with all of that said, for all of our listeners, you know, there's a lot going on because I just even heard just recently, you know, even with the development, and that's at my heart, with the, with the daycare centers that are even coming into the township. They're not coming just because they wanna come. There are a lot of young families, obviously, maybe, maybe unknown to many of us that are moving into this township. We got little ducklings coming. We have the new project here at the Tyler Center at the intermediate unit. All of these things are not just happening for happenstance. You know, people look at demographics and studies and they look at the movement. And this is how businesses will start knocking on our door, wanting to be a part of the Callan. So, you know, let's, let's give them what they want, you know, and walk on them as they come. Yes. On Sunday, December fourth, we're inviting all the families in the township and your friends to come down to the tree lighting ceremony. That's always a delight and it's such an eventful time of coming together and just showing again each other some communion of, of the spirit of Christmas, the spirit of community as we light the Christmas tree. We'll have caroling again by the Coatesville High School Maestro Singers, bonfire, and for the little kids, Santa will arrive. I mean, you could just see the twinkle in their eyes. It's, it's worth it.
Santa's for me too.
And for Santa for Commissioner Evans. And, you know, just come out, bring your family, join in the caroling. The Hectagonal Schoolhouse will be open. It's always a delight to, uh, visit the little schoolhouse and bring the children along. And the Callan Township Police Office Department will be, uh, up until December sixth, uh, collecting Toys for Tots. And we'll also be collecting them that evening as well. During the Christmas season, uh, the, uh, Callan Township Parks and Recreation will have our annual recreation holiday decorating contest. That's always fun. And that will take place on December twenty-first. Uh, there's no registration, uh, there's no cost, it's free, but you need to register, uh, by calling the township and speaking with Abby at extension one four eight. Because you'll have to give us permission to photograph, to come to your home. We'll be driving around, have the categories are for best use of lawn ornaments, best use of lights, best multimedia, and a classic holiday. And we will also have a residence choice category. With the winner selected will be, uh, by vote on Facebook. All winners will receive a gift card prize from Hatch True Value and a special award ornament. Wow. So there's a lot of great stuff going on. I mean, hey, pretty soon you'll might know the ice skating rink will be open here in Callan soon. They have a big recreational center that's gonna attract, I don't know how many venues of, of basketball and hockey and indoor sports. So there's just construction that's going on all over the place. It's just amazing and it makes me feel good. And thank you for everybody that came out today to, um, welcome and support Lomax.
Yay.
They've done a tremendous job in that warehouse. I mean, a tremendous job. You know, I don't know what it looks like because I can't see into the future, but, you know, let's work together, let's be community. And let's understand that their heart is to support every endeavor that we can imagine. And, and let's see, and only time will tell, but let's give them the opportunity to present themselves in the way that they presented themselves today. Thank you. Okay, our next, uh, report will be given by the municipal authority?
No cog.
No cog. It was gonna be.
Anyone here from the municipal authority?
I just heard from him, he's floating on a ship.
That's what I thought.
Okay. We'll get a report when Mr. Paul Mullin returns off of the ship. You know, enjoy yourself, Paul, out there on the sea. And Dara, does he also do that?
He does.
Yeah.
Anyone here to give a report on the fireboard?
I think Paul wants listening.
He's, he's, boy, he's floating out there on. Mr. Evans, Historical Commission?
Historical Commission. Historical Commission has met three times since our last update. We had our regularly scheduled meetings on Wednesday, October nineteenth and last night, Wednesday, November sixteenth, plus a special meeting on Wednesday, November second. Uh, we had quorum, a quorum of members as well as a few guests, both in person and on Zoom for all. On October nineteenth, representatives from all Phil came back to address further comments from the Spackman, uh, from the Spackman, what's on my mind? From the September meeting, uh, it was another very constructive workshop. Uh, also on October nineteenth, local historian and author Catherine Quillman also joined us to talk about Callan Township and the Underground Railroad. We welcomed new member Donna Di Prinzio and I'm happy to say we have another two candidates awaiting interviews. If you're looking for a fun, working group to align with, we just might be the right fit for you. The special meeting on November second focused on this Saturday Spackman Farm event, as did last night's meeting. Our next scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, December twenty-first. Our meetings are hybrids, so you can join us right here live or from home on Zoom. And remember, we're doing big things and accomplishing big things needs lots of help. Consider joining the Historical Commission to make our past a real part of our future.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Josh, will you be able, you give a report on the Lincoln Highway project?
Yeah, as, as, um, Mark said earlier, we, uh, few more hurdles, I think, and then we're clear at the county. You know, it's a little later than we had anticipated, but, you know, we'll, we'll do what we need to do to get it passed. The hope is, once we get that passed and we have the zoning in place early next year, that we will reconstitute the Lincoln Highway Committee and really start getting to work with some new people and, um, you know, well, once we have all this in place, you know, there's really something for people to work on. So, um, you know, once we roll around to the beginning of the year, we have some people who are interested and, and we're gonna be reaching out to them to restart Lincoln Highway Group uh, as a full committee.
Thank you, Josh.
So, and thank you, Josh.
Just a quick note to bring you up to date about the golf course is that the golf course is coming along. Well, uh, we are in the black. The golf carts and mowers have been approved and will be arriving next year. And we have several projects that we are working on. Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie.
You're welcome.
Any, any additional business?
Additional business?
Right. I'm sorry, I, I just got carried away a little bit, I guess, with the Parker Recreation stuff. The meeting that we went to last week, what's that called?
Cato.
Cato?
The Chester County Association of Township Supervisors.
Yes, very, very nice. It was my first meeting there and, um, I was really impressed, um, to see all the township managers, uh, a lot of our vendors, Arrow, eight one one, I mean, you, you just couldn't even imagine all the people that support all the municipalities throughout Chester County. Like just coming together and understanding that we're in this together whether we like it or not. And everybody's has the same ideas and projection as far as moving forward. And, and Chester County is like hot, you know, and, and we wanna be on that train. And, you know, they're talking about even now, bringing SEPTA, not just stopping in Thorndale, it's going west. And it's going west for a reason. But we want them to be able to stop right here too, you know? I mean, I know they do, but I mean, to really stop and get off. But, I mean, that's, that's the, the direction that the, uh, county is moving in, in, in housing, a lot of development going on. You know, we're not gonna make any more land, so everybody's trying to make good use of the land. And, uh, some of the presentations that were, uh, presented by, uh, even Mr. Mullin, who's not here, uh, he had opportunity to share comments and it was just very exciting to see that the county commissioners are very interested in partnering with us. So even sometimes if we don't know what's available in the way of grants, they do. Even if there isn't money available for a certain project, they wanna hear from us. Like, how can we help? You know, we can't just sit here and just say, hey, look, there's no help, there's no money. There's excess money.
Excess.
And they, and they clearly stated that there's excess money. What are you trying to do? What do you want to do? How do you propose to do it? So without engineering or without plans, you can't move forward and say, we need this. Well, we need to see something more tangible. So that's why it's important to get the engineers involved and to get plans developed because then now you can take your plans and present them so that you can get the support that our county commissioners say that they are behind every municipality in this common, uh, in the Chester County southwestern, uh, cog area. And that's what the cog is really about, like, bringing everybody together. How can we partner? How can we sustain without each other? It's impossible. That's all I need to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. I, I, on that note, you know, I've, the money is there. And I, I've, I've spoken with, with, uh, a couple, our, our, our state representatives recently, and our new state representative for, uh, a chunk of Callan. That money has, has been going to big companies. But we can get it. The money is out there. Things, I said this three years ago, and I'm going to say it again. Things are going to change whether we like it or not. And we can either act now to make sure they change in a way that benefits us, or we can sit back and wait until we end up being the dumpster of Chester County, and our citizens deserve better. I rang on your prayer because you gave such a great little thing there.
Just glad to be there. That was, uh, nice. I mean, being a new kid on the block, and now I get in all this exposure. It, it brings a new heightened level of awareness for me.
Yeah.
And, you know, with that, it helps me to be a little bit more, you know, um, considerate of what's there, you know, and, and not taking for granted what we have, but what we need, you know, and it makes a big difference, and I want to be a part of that. So thank you for allowing me to serve, you know, in that capacity. Do we have anybody in the public that wants to make a comment before we adjourn? Oh, Tony?
Tony Desario, two fifty-one Loomis Avenue, Callan. First, first of all, I am for any business coming into Callan. These guys here on Edge Mill, how many years they've been doing that? They've been doing that a long time. Um, the bridge out here, when is that going to happen?
The bid award to accept the bid is December twenty-second.
Because I know there was a timeline. It said there was a timeline of eighteen months, and it's been over.
Still within. I said, we are still within that timeline.
Within. Yeah, I just, that's, everybody keeps asking me, that's why.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
Yes, but they're going to run that trail straight through our neighborhood.
So, Mr. Young, and I'm going from your data, I wasn't here, but to put it in perspective, how long did the Osborne Bridge take to build?
Design and build, well, build ninety days, design seven and a half years.
And, and we've designed in, yeah, and we've designed in twelve months. So it, it's not that the wheels have not been turning, uh, but it's, I.
Low.
Yeah, I think people don't recognize how many permits and how many levels you have to go through, um, anytime there's a stream crossing. So, so just to kind of put that in perspective, seven years for Osborne Road Bridge, twelve months for municipal.
And that's following the federal regulations.
Correct.
Was, was the, and, and that, I mean, that whole process is, is a nightmare. But they pay eighty-five percent of the cost.
And I don't know how many of you guys actually traveled to the western part of the township where I live, but the Napa Building, I mean, it was in such despair for so long, and it finally got painted. Oh, my God, it looks like a new facility, and, uh, they're redoing and modifying the Dairy Queen. Oh, my gosh. I can't tell you the last time, I don't know if you've been there, uh, but it's being remodeled, and it should look good for this year coming up. What is it going to be?
That would happen?
I.
I couldn't hear what was said.
What, the Dairy Queen building?
Yeah, go ahead.
The Dairy Queen?
Yeah, did somebody say it's something else now?
I thought it was being just remodeled, but I, what else were they going to do with it? I didn't hear.
Give me thirty seconds.
Right. Yes. Callan Ice Cream? No, I'm saying, is that what it's going to be called? Callan Ice Cream Shop? Right. I see they have like a, a chicken, some kind of barbecue raising money out every week.
The car lot.
Do you know what it's going to be called?
I just texted Ray.
Oh.
He's the, the inside knowledge on.
But that's going to be nice. I mean, because for me, it was, you couldn't even sit out there without getting splitters all up your legs and rear end, trying to enjoy ice cream cone and, and Poison Ivy hanging down over top of your head. You know, so just to see that people are, oh, my God.
Um, texted Ray Stackhouse. It's, it's still, it's just a renovation.
Yes. Mm-hmm. It's still going to be Dairy Queen.
Oh, yeah.
They may have, but I think they're, it's just a franchise.
Yeah.
But it's just nice that it's going to be renovated, it's going to be well-maintenance, and it's just, it just looks better up that part of the township.
I was going to say, don't take away my Dairy Queen.
Yeah, no, I don't think they're taking it away. I just think they're remodeling. It's going to be a nice place to hang out, maybe look at some umbrellas out there, and we can enjoy having ice cream again. All right, if all matters have been settled, then we have another question on the floor.
We have Mingwiss as our ambulance. We needed an ambulance to come, and Washington Hoes came. They don't recognize Mingwiss's donations, membership. Talking around, all the, all your ambulance companies recognize each other. Ming, one, one ambulance company told me that Washington Hoes is the only one that doesn't play fairly. Now, if we're going to house them in the township, shouldn't we have a ambulance company that recognizes the other one? And I may be correct it here, with Tower Health leaving, Mingwiss is going to be very thin because they're going to be the, uh, medic for a lot of other ambulances. Okay, so they're going to be going over that side and not charging those residents. But when Washington comes over to the other side, they're charging. Yeah, I got a four-hundred-dollar bill, and I had insurance. The people who don't have insurance, what are they going to have to pay? Did you know that they don't recognize?
Well.
So, sir, they, they.
I'm sorry, Josh, go ahead.
I was going to say, they, we had them in a couple of months ago when the Tower Health was changing, and they sat in that chair over there, and they told us that they accept all other, uh, fire company, um, credits, and that they would not be billing people that have memberships with other EMS companies. So we need to look into that because they sat there and lied to us if that's the case.
So another thing.
I got the bill on October thirty-first.
Is it, and, and this is just, just a curiosity, did you try appealing to your insurance?
The insurance paid their share.
Okay.
The, the hundred dollars, hundred fifty, what you give Mingwiss or whatever, great, that covers the COPA.
Understood, but, but usually.
Said that, or Washington Hoes says that they do not recognize Mingwiss when I called them. And then I asked Mingwiss, and they said the same thing. Mingwiss told me that goodwill would come from Westchester and not bill me, but Washington Hoes, which is right around the corner.
I know.
Well, they, they told us something completely different, so I think we need to, to look into that. And if, if so, then maybe they don't need to be a provider for us.
So I, I don't mean to put, um, Andrew on the spot, but, hey, you showed up at the meeting. Um, just, yeah, I, I heard a rumor to the effect they just signed an agreement last week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
They signed a joint billing agreement with us.
Okay.
Meaning that we can now invoice them for the ALS component of the BLS transport that they do for us. So when we come in as the paramedic unit, they're, they, the, the way the federal laws are written is we can't, both ambulances can't invoice. One does the invoice, and the other invoices, Mingwiss would invoice, Washington Hoes for the ALS portion of the bill.
So, but there's still no interoperability?
As far as memberships?
Yes.
They did not sign anything in that regard.
Okay, I was just, just, then I heard a, an invalid rumor in the EMS world?
No comment.
Thank you. And, um, so, sir, I'm very concerned because, and Mr. Young is, is correct. They sat here and said they would absolutely represent that. Um, if you could, if I give you my email, or I don't know if you have his phone phone number, or if, if you wouldn't mind sharing your information with me, I have no problem calling them on your behalf. Um, I don't know, I don't have any magic. I, I don't do sorcery, subject to, to rumor, but I don't. Um, but I, I have no problem calling and saying, you, you promised us, um, and that this, this resident should be made. Okay, that's wonderful. And your phone number, too, please. Um, but this, that was something that they told us they would do.
And Miss, uh, Danny?
Yes, sir.
If, if they say no, we want to see them at the next meeting.
Yes.
Very well, sir.
Yeah.
I, I know Commissioner Young and I were, were, you know, sitting next to each other when we were having discussions about what we were going to do, you know, when, when September first hit, and that we were going to be then planning for the new year.
Right.
And I got to tell you, I, I know that at least one of us said at the time, there's got to be some reciprocity between, uh, ambulance services, or they're not playing fair. And we've got decisions to make for January first, and if this is the game they're going to play, hey,
Good.
I, I, they're not going to have any support from this guy, from this guy. And I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry. I'm, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Ridiculous. Yes.
Any other comments from anybody in? All right, if all matters have been settled, can I take, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.